Good morning, sorry, good afternoon everyone and welcome to this meeting of the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership. We have the following members joining virtually via Microsoft Teams. councillor Bob Bushell from the City of Lincoln. The following officers are also joining via Microsoft Teams. We have Steve Bird from the City of Lincoln. Victoria Burgess, East Lindsay, Boston Borough and South Holland District Council. Charlotte Payne from South Holland District Council. Rachel Stamp from Lincolnshire County Council and Anna Hods from Lincolnshire County Council. Moving on to item one of the agenda, election of chairman. I would now like to invite nominations for the position of chairman for the year 2022 to 2023.
Please, could I propose councillor McNally? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Can I please ask councillor Bushell joining online if you could switch on your camera? And can I ask now all those present in the chamber and joining virtually to raise your hand if you are in favour? One, two, three, four. Councillor Bushell? I don't think councillor Bushell can hear. That's carried, chairman.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, everyone. That brings on to the election of the vice chairman. So can I have nominations for the vice chairman, please? Councillor Brerley?
Thank you, chairman. Can I propose councillor Richard Wright? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Head?
I'd like to second that, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Whitson? Any other nominations? Can I just ask? Everyone in favour? Thank you. Yes, sorry. So can everyone hear online?
No.
Hello?
No.
We'll just stop for a minute while we sort out the... Yeah. Adjourn.
Good afternoon. Can you hear on Teams?
Yes, we can just hear now, just started.
So for those who couldn't hear online, we've gone through item one and two. So now on to item three, which is apologies for absence.
I haven't received any apologies for absence.
And has anyone got any declarations of interest? Seeing none, so... The minutes of the last meeting. Is everyone happy with them? Yep.
Yep.
And number six is the partner updates. So we've been sent the list of the updates from the partners. Is there anyone that's got anything to add to any of them? No, seeing none. So that's just for noting anyway. And the next one is the Environment Act and the emerging national policies. Matthew's going to present this one. So whenever you ready, Matthew?
Thank you very much, chairman. Hopefully all partners are aware, in fact, I'm sure everybody is, of the emerging national policy coming as a result of the Environment Act, the Resources and Waste Strategy for England, the policy items about which there were rounds of consultation in spring of 2019 and summer of 2021. We're still awaiting the government's formal responses to two of the three consultations which they held. Those consultations were on the subject of consistency of collections, standardising collections nationally from households and businesses, harmonising dry recyclables, mandatory food waste collections, and what they're calling free garden waste collections, all of which were proposed in those consultations. We are still awaiting final clarification of which items they'll be taking forwards and when. There's also enhanced producer responsibility. And that's bringing forwards funding from packaging producers to fund collection and recycling of certain items and will hopefully result in significant funding for local authorities. We have had some clarification of that through the government's response to that consultation. We are still waiting on some details, including exactly how much that funding will be. But that is certainly good news for local authorities. And the third item was deposit return schemes, introducing a charge, a deposit charge on drinks containers which can be reclaimed by the consumer on returning the container for recycling. Again, we're still waiting for clarification on exactly what will be included in that, on how much the charge will be, on exactly when it will come in. But all of the additional details, we're hoping for imminently from national government. But we don't know exactly when yet. But what we can do is to think about those items in general, what the impacts are on us as a partnership. We need to be mindful of them. In responding to the consultations in the first place, the LWP was generally supportive of the proposals. But we did express concerns over some of the details. And this paper looks into some of those details that we know and some of the things we're waiting to hear about. Whilst we're awaiting a lot of that formal clarification, there are some things that we do know. In terms of consistent collections, the Environment Act of 2021 specifies a standard list of dry recyclables that have to be collected from all households and businesses. The good news is that working together, we've already established a list across the county and we already collect most of what's on the list that the government have. One key exception is plastic films, which they're looking to introduce from 2027. And that is something we're going to have to be looking at as a partnership. Also, in terms of dry recyclables, they've specified that each material must be collected separately, although there are some exceptions, as there have been in previous rounds of legislation. Our move as a partnership that has begun in some districts to twin stream collections is certainly a step in that direction of separate collections. And we believe that it's currently acceptable to collect the metal, plastic and glass mixed together, which those who've introduced twin stream collections are doing. But we will need to continue to monitor whether that continues to be true as the legislation evolves. In terms of garden waste, the proposal is that those collections become free to householders and can no longer be charged for. The partnership expressed concerns that that does seem to go against the producer pays principle. And that this would create a potential funding gap for collection authorities who can no longer charge for it. In terms of food waste, the proposal is that collections become mandatory from all households and businesses. We don't know some of the details, but we do know from the Environment Act that the collections are to be weekly from all households, separate from other recyclables. Although it may, but it's yet to be clarified, be acceptable to collect it alongside green waste. And it must be recycled or composted. It can't be disposed of having been collected separately. We are waiting for clarification of things like the date that that's to come in. But the latest that we've heard remains the suggestion that it will be from 2025. March is the date we're currently looking at, but we don't know specifically. I'm sure it won't be any sooner than that, but we clearly need to be moving in that direction. And that is already a key project for us as a partnership. Although DEFRA have yet to publish the response to their consistency collection, they have clarified in their Enhanced Producer Responsibility consultation response that the payments local authorities will receive for household packaging under EPR will support the delivery of the UK government's proposals for consistent recycling collections from households. So funding through that producer responsibility scheme is intended to help us with those consistent collections. That may unfortunately be instead of new burdens funding, but again, it's still not clear how that's going to work. As I've said, enhanced, extended producer responsibility, we've had details of what's happening with that. The Environment Act specified that there will be secondary legislation requiring the payments of sums in respect to the costs of disposing of products and materials, which is good news. And DEFRA have said that the aim of EPR is to pass through the costs for processing that waste packaging, to pass through those costs from the packaging producers. There are conditions that local authorities should receive their full net costs where they have taken all reasonable steps to establish effective and efficient systems. So there may be benchmarking, there may be targets to be met in order to receive that full net cost recovery. We will clearly be looking at that as soon as we know what those targets are going to be. But certainly I would say that our twin stream collections, the results we're seeing alongside twin stream collections and reduced contamination can only be a step in the right direction for achieving whatever targets are set for us. EPR currently has a start date of 2024, but it will be on a phased basis. So the whole system won't be in place from then. And there will need to be sampling of packaging in order to establish how much of what type of packaging there is and therefore what funding is due. The county council is already in the process of putting that in place. Indeed, we've got sampling in place now available from all the transfer stations. And one other thing in terms of what's been clarified about EPR is for business waste, in the absence of an agreement on how to implement it, it's currently being excluded from that system until 2028. Deposit return schemes, again, we're waiting for the final consultation response from government. But the Environment Act does allow for that secondary legislation to establish deposit schemes. The key impact on the LWP of such schemes would be the diversion of some recyclables from council systems, reducing collection tonnages, reducing the MRF tonnages that need to be processed, but also potentially increasing the gate fees that have to be paid on that tonnage. Because there's a mechanism whereby high value recyclables, which are some of the things being diverted, result in a lower gate fee. So there could be a cost overall to the partnership. One of the things that does come through in terms of the EPR consultation response referring to DRS is that the scheme for England will be all in rather than on the go. That was one of the key questions in the consultations, was whether it was just going to be small packaging, the sort of thing one might find littered, or include all sizes of, for instance, drink bottles. It will also include plastic bottles and metal cans, but not glass bottles, which had been in the original proposal. Glass will thus fall under the EPR system. And there will be some differences across the UK. For instance, the Scotland and Wales scheme have already been specified as including glass bottles. So there could be issues in terms of areas near borders. So in light of all of those things, it's essential that the LWP's strategic thinking going forwards takes account of the impacts of those national policies. And thus, I would propose it's necessary for us to undertake a serious and deep review of our existing waste strategy for Lincolnshire and if necessary, begin the development of a new strategy. And my recommendations as a result are that the LWP authorises the inclusion in the appendices of the 2021/22 annual report, which I'll be talking about in a few minutes, an initial review of the impacts of those emerging policies. Indeed, that is included in the draft version which has been circulated. And that the LWP authorises offices to begin through the Strategic Officer Working Group, a more detailed review of the policy impacts with a view to, coming back to the next LWP meeting with a view of the extent of the work required and in particular whether it's necessary now to start work on developing a new joint municipal waste management strategy which takes account of that emerging national policy. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Matthew. Councillor Wright?
Thank you, Matthew. That was a good summary of what's going on, but some questions. And I was talking to some people in Waste up at Harrogate the other week. First of all, with regards to allowing for secondary legislation means they've missed the boat in not putting it through in primary. Because from what I understand, it can still be challenged quite heavily. So with regards to the Extended Producer Responsibility, because nothing's been done at the primary legislation stage, they still haven't consulted properly across far and wide with industry. So there's been no sort of levels of indicative payment set as such, because they're still looking at it. Which the reality is, that means that that secondary legislation could be a long time coming. So in the meantime, who's going to pick the bill up? You know, that's the big question for me and one of the things we need to look at. The deposit return scheme, then where I understand, is it now implemented in Scotland or trialled?
I believe it's in place in Scotland, yes.
Then, yes, it might be, we wouldn't be involved in collecting from the deposit schemes, you know, because it... But what's happened, there's been a proliferation of deposit boxes or deposit points. So we're not just about local authority, you know, we're all supposed to be working towards an environmental aim. And actually, if you consider, they've done it in some quite dense areas and we've got rural Lincolnshire, is that what is that going to do to the carbon footprint, you know, across the industry of driving around all these different little deposit schemes? And that to me is quite worrying, because that just means more trucks on the road, not less. And so anywhere we can seek to influence that and see how that's put in place in this area, I think would be really useful. And then the other one is with regards to dry recyclables, it says that so far we've been, you know, allowed, which is currently acceptable, but obviously that was under TEEP. Will TEEP survive past the act? Because that's the only way, you know, we've been able to fight over the years to keep that mix. And if TEEP falls, then we will be on separate little boxes for every little item.
In terms of TEEP, hopefully everyone's aware, but yeah, technically, environmentally and economically practicable, whilst the legislation has changed, the essential spirit of that does continue in the Environment Act. I haven't got the exact wording in front of me, but it does say that you need to be looking at the... I think it's where it's environmentally disadvantageous, then... But the legislation does cover that there are exceptions. It has carried through into the Environment Act. So whilst we will need to be looking at any services that we put in place or even existing services and ensuring that we still comply, there is still that opportunity for exceptions where it's the best thing to do is not to collect everything separately. And in terms of those other points, yes, I would agree with those other things you said, that they're things we need to be looking at.
Councillor?
Councillor Bushell, for Teams.
Yeah, councillor Head and councillor Bushell.
Thank you very much, chairman. Thank you very much for that update, Matthew. I think you've summarised pretty well what we know we don't know at this point in time. And obviously, as already been said, the devil will be in the detail with the Environment Act, with all the secondary legislation that comes through. Could you just confirm for me, you made a couple of references about undertaking work. And two of the things that interest me, one is the garden waste or green waste and food waste. And I won't go into details on a report that's further on the agenda. But could you confirm that as a partnership, we're looking at potential means of disposal of these items, both separately and co-mingled in terms of digestion for producing of either biodiesel or gas? Because at one stage it was put forward that when this came about, we could be looking at producing biodiesel to fuel the fleets on that. So that's just one area. And I guess that we probably are already looking at that capacity, because it's not something that can be immediately brought online. And there may well be excess capacity available at the moment. I don't know. But it's something that I think we should be looking at. Also, the plastic film issue. There's been some reports in various press releases about food waste and paper and card. Where some people are saying food waste doesn't matter and some people say that it does. It's all to do with, obviously, with the oils that go into the process. When we're looking at plastic film, if we're looking at plastic film, a lot of plastic film will be on food containers, would be cling film and that sort of thing, which could be quite heavily contaminated. And again, are we looking at the means of disposal? People who are collecting film now, I know the supermarkets are collecting it. In my opinion, it may not be for altruistic reasons, that it's part of the Extended Producer Responsibility, they're collecting that. But we're looking at the potential implications of food waste because, sorry, of plastic films. Because currently, we can't collect it because we can't dispose of it with our recyclers. So again, it's capacity that will need to be looked at, to be put into place to accommodate that. And the other thing that I would say in connection with looking at the way that we operate as a waste partnership, I would like to suggest that at this particular point in time, because of the things that are changing in terms of the Environment Act and because of the current economic climate, we sit here today as a partnership. And I would like to see something come forward with a future date as an aim for us to act as one as a partnership. Because I think it's now going to be very important for us as local authorities to work together as one to minimise costs, to come forward with a consistent approach across all this, both for residents and environmentally. So that's something that I would like to suggest that we as a partnership now look very closely at how we can work together as one, as one authority effectively, not as seven individual authorities coming together every couple of months to talk about how we produce, how we collect and recycle waste within the county. I think the time has come now where we need to seriously think about acting as one. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Head. There's a lot of food for thought there. Sorry, pardon the pun. In terms of AD, anaerobic digestion and garden waste, I don't know, Mike, if you'd like to come in on that one?
Thank you. Yes, you can hear me. Okay, thank you. In terms of the market engagement that we've carried out so far, all indications are that food and garden waste should be treated differently. So with the engagement, we've been talking to suppliers around the county and outside of the counties, as well as neighbouring authorities, to see what the possibilities are. We're not aware of any facilities, any anaerobic digestion plants that do both materials together because of the efficiency and inefficiency of trying to mix the material and blend it. And it's got very different calorific values. However, the door is open for both types of opportunities. But at this point in time, I think it's like saying, can a car be diesel or petrol? And can we have something that will run both? I think the indications are that it's not efficient to try and do that. And in terms of just going on the second point about films and flexible plastics, I think with food waste, again, we will be talking to the market to see what is out there, what the possibilities are at this point in time. Because a lot of our kind of strategy will have to be built around what is the art of the possible. Because we all might have great intentions as to what we'd like to see happen, but we need the commercial sector to be able to deliver on what we need. So we will be engaging closer with our existing partners and other commercial operators out there to see what is possible. I don't want to say more than that, because I'm not an expert on what happens with food and films. But I would imagine in terms of the process, it could be quite a simple process to wash films. It's something which you can't do with paper and card, for example, because of the degradation that happens with the fibres. I think film being what it is, it's able to be washed. So I may be speaking out of turn there, but I think that's something that could be a possibility that we need to discuss with commercial sector. Over to you, Matthew.
Thank you, Mike. In terms of the last item you mentioned, councillor Head, I would say, yes, that's a matter for the partnership to discuss is how the partnership works. It is certainly something that in our current joint municipal waste management strategy, we said that we would regularly review and consider how the partnership works. So I would say that's a potential item for discussion going forwards.
Yeah, thank you. Is that something worth sort of the Office of Working Group bringing up?
Yes, we could start discussing at the SOWG, that's fine. But I think that there will have to be a very high level commitment if that is a possibility that everyone wants to investigate. So I think we can start looking at the kind of practicalities, but ultimately... looking at the, the kind of practicalities, but ultimately will be a political decision. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Yep. So councillor Bushel? Can everyone still hear us online?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I just wondered when we envisaged moving to the separate collections. It's been mentioned in the report that we will move to separate collections of metal, plastic and glass. And reference has also been made to food waste and co-mingling with green waste, which seems to be a proposition, but not, not feasible. There's still the mention of the free weekly collection of green waste and food waste, but clearly somebody has to pay, and at some stage we're going to need to know who that is. All these unknowns are quite a significant challenge for a local authority that's looking to redo its waste collection contract in twenty twenty-six. And I, I just wondered how the deposit return scheme is envisaged, that it will actually work, and, and why it doesn't contain glass element, which is incorporated in Scotland and Wales. It seems to be a complete anomaly that that's not included. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Do you want to pick that up, Matthew?
Hi Candy, thank you. Yes, I would say in terms of deposit return scheme, just, just coming back to an, an item that I said before, a correction, and thank you to Charlotte for this, the Scottish deposit return scheme goes live in August of next year, August twenty twenty-three. It's not live as yet, there have been trial elements of it, apologies for, for my mistake on that. In terms of the deposit return scheme for England and differences with Scotland and Wales, that's a decision that national government have made. I think there are difficulties with it being a different scheme in the different countries. I'm not quite sure what their thinking is in having it separate, but that is the decision that's been taken. I would say, the, the impression I get, having been in various webinars and things about it, is that the glass industry feel that if their glass is put into reverse vending machines, then it's crushed up into pieces that are much smaller than they'd like, and they'd much rather receive glass in larger chunks, collected in other ways, rather than through a deposit return scheme. And it may be that they've, they're lobbying a national government, is why glass has now been excluded. But yes, that's the government plan for England. In terms of free collections, I, whenever I write free collections, I always make sure I put it in inverted commas, because I don't quite understand the, the view that by charging people via taxation, rather than charging people directly, it becomes free, rather than just a different way of charging. But I, that may just be my own view. In terms of collecting the two together, I think I'm aware that in terms of collections, in terms of the whole system from start to end, and as Mike already said, the processing, there would, there are issues with collecting green waste and food waste together, especially when one is specified by national government to be required to be every week, and the other one is currently done fortnightly across the county, then I think there are huge issues. I suppose part of my aim was just to, to make sure everyone was aware. It may end up legislatively being a possibility, but then it may not. We don't know the details yet. I think that's, that's all the items that councillor Bushel mentioned. Was there anything else?
I, I think you've covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Councillor Whitson.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. One of my big concerns is, I was at the same event that councillor Ry was at as well, whereas some of the issues, and I think councillor Myrick's very good point about potentially the carbon footprint, so having lots and lots of vehicles, you know, charging around the county, delivering different waste streams to different parts of the county, could very well, you know, create a much greater carbon footprint, actually. So one of these unintended consequences. But, but I mean, one of my big concerns is the cost, what the cost impact of all this is going to have on local authorities. I mean, I, I just speak from, I can just speak from South Caerfeydwr District Council, and we think this will cost us potentially five million pounds. The green waste, if we, you know, have to, you know, provide a free green waste collection service, not only will we lose the income that we're going to receive, we'll increase costs, obviously. I mean, we're currently going out to just, around about just half of our households we're collecting green waste from. So we can see our costs doubling, and a loss of income. That could cost us nearly three million pounds per year. In, in the paper that I'm going to present a, a little while about the food waste, the impact of implementing food waste for, for SK, we think could be anything between a million and a million and a half. By the time we start having to do all, some, some of this other stuff as well, you know, potentially we're at five million, six, five million, six million. And yeah, it, it, it's good that, you know, potentially some funding could become available from the producers, but that's only going to cover a, a small proportion of the cost. You know, I, I'm not entirely sure how government expect us to actually do all this without making extra funding available for us. I, I presented an, an update on the Environment Act to my SK Environment Committee a couple of months ago. And that, well, the action was, they, they asked me to write to the Secretary of State, DEFRA, asking for some clarity around this and around funding. I've not received a reply as yet. I mean, in, in view of some of the other sort of pressures on government expenditure at the moment, I just, I just, I just cannot see how government can, can, can foist all of this responsibility on us without making funding available. You know, it's just, it's just, it's just, it's just isn't going to fly. So I'm not quite sure what we can do as a waste partnership to, you know, you start to, to really raise this issue and start just banging on a government to say, yeah, we can do it, but you're going to have to realise it's going to cost a lot of money. And, you know, and, and certainly, certainly for SK, an extra five million quid, well, our revenue budgets are only about nineteen million quid. We've got to find another third, thirty-five percent budget, or save, or, or make extensive savings, savings from elsewhere. It, it just isn't going to fly. So I was wondering what we can do to put pressure on government around this and, and around the funding issue. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whitson.
I would say that's a good question. I think it behoves us as a partnership to look at how we can lobby and make sure we get our message across. Certainly, various of us from the Strategic Officer Working Group are doing it through bodies we're involved in. I know Charlotte's working with the district council network. I'm involved in NORDO, National Association of Waste Disposal Officers. I think we just have to go through those bodies that we're involved in and lobby as best we can, and make it clear that doing extra things for less money or the same money is a difficult thing to do.
I think, I think you made impossible thing to do. Is there anyone else? Councillor Head?
Thank you, chairman. I'd just like to, to clarify something. In, in terms of garden waste collection, it's not an additional tax that the, the local authorities impose on people. It's, yes, it's a paid-for service, but it's a recovery of costs only. And this morning, when I came back from walking my dogs, I looked in the, down the roads in, in South Kym, and I would guess that this morning about eighty percent of the houses in South Kym had bins out. Some of them have one, some have two. So people are quite happy with this service. And as Matthew pointed out early, to, to provide this free, in inverted commas, flies in the face of the producer pays for it. And, and if I lived in an urban area, where I have a courtyard garden or something like that, I would take a pretty dim view if my, my tax went up to pay for somebody like me in the, in the countryside that has a couple of, of garden waste bins. So people who are listening to this, it's not an additional tax, it's just a cost recovery, and it's providing a service. That's the imposition. It's not something that people have to have. It's, it's a paid-for, by-choice service, and a very good service it is too, that's provided by the, the district councils. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Bushel. Is that a legacy hand, or?
Yes, it is. Apologies.
Yeah, no problem. So seeing no one else, the, the recommendations on page eighteen. Can all those members, voting members that are online, just put the video on, and everyone else, if you're in agreement, raise your hand? Yeah, so that's, everyone's agreed with that one. So that brings on to item eight, which is the performance update and the draft annual report. Matthew?
Thank you, chairman. Just concluding that previous item, so we'll, we'll take that away as a work stream for the Strategic Officer Working Group to look at, including that in future strategic direction. So it felt right to put these two papers in this order, because the, the national, emerging national policy needs to feed into how we're working. But in some ways, this is now going back and looking at last year, because this is a, a look at the draft annual report that, that has been produced, and giving members a chance to, to look at it before it gets published. I'm hoping that everyone would have had a chance to have a read-through. Many thanks to those who've given feedback, including those who said, yes, that's, that's great, thank you. But also those who've given feedback, that has now been included in revised versions. We're now up to version one point five, which is, yeah, I can't remember how many preversions there were. It's at least the fifth, but I think there were several more before that. It gives us a chance to look back over the last year, to look at what we've done, to look at our achievements, to publicise our achievements, to make it clear that in the face of some challenging times, that services have continued, and not only continued, but services have improved. And I would commend the document to you before it goes out for public viewing. The document, the annual report overall consists of two documents, both of which have, well, one of which, sorry, has been circulated via the Agenda Pack, the second of which has been circulated via the Strategic Officer Working Group. So I'm hoping members would have had a chance to see it. The annual review document is the public-facing summary, which as last year's was, will be published on the partnership page of the county council website. It's this one that, that I'm seeking approval for at this stage. The appendices are still very much open to, to any additional feedback, but since they're largely for, for the consumption of the partnership, because of the level of detail they go into, then they clearly, they don't look quite so pretty as the annual review does. So just going quickly through the annual review, Rachel, could you put up on screen the annual review PDF? He doesn't like it. Right, the technology doesn't like it. Okay, for those who have received the Agenda Pack, the, there's a clean version, and there's a version with notes on, in the email that went out today. And the version, the second document, the separate document, is the one that's the, the current version that I am proposing as a draft for the partnership to consider. It includes a number of pages, including an introduction on behalf of the, the partnership chairman. It includes a page about working together, how the strategy promotes the waste hierarchy and a circular economy. The wider picture, looking at the national policy developments, such as what I've just been talking about, about maintaining essential services through Covid and into a possible new normal of changed public behaviour of what waste they present and how. It looks at improving services, how we've now receiving better quality recyclables through twin-stream collections. It talks about tackling waste crime and our involvement with the Environmental Crime Partnership for Lincolnshire. It looks at unified communications, and how by giving out the same message across the county, we can, we can give a stronger message. It's, has a page about looking to the future, how we're going to take account of those national policies that are emerging, particularly through food waste collections. And the final page has some infographics, some diagrams of some of the key numbers and headlines. And that's the main change in the, the latest version from what was previously circulated. The version that was previously circulated, I didn't have the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two numbers available yet. So the version in the Agenda Pack has the old numbers, the new ones, which match elsewhere in the document, are, are on the new version that was the second attachment that Rachel circulated today. Though, I, again, I thank those who've contributed to the development of that annual review document. And as I will come to in a few minutes, my recommendation is that the partnership approve that for publication, subject to some, some tweaking from the LCC comms team. Because one of the things that has been pointed out is that whilst, whilst the content is, is now hopefully there and says what it needs to say, it would be nice if it looked a bit nicer with the pictures and how it's arranged, and maybe more pictures. So I'm hoping to share it with a colleague from LCC communications team, in order to, to develop that further. So that's the, the main review document. And then moving on to the appendices, there are three appendices in the appendix document, which didn't come out in the Agenda Pack, but has been circulated separately. Those three appendices are a review of the Joint Municipal Waste Management Strategy Vision and Objectives, looking at whether they're still fit for purpose, whether we've fulfilled some of them. And tying in with what I've already said, looking at national policy, that review has, has pointed towards the fact that we might be at the stage where we need to start to look at developing a new Joint Municipal Waste Management Strategy. Whilst the previous one was only adopted three and a half years ago, it was in preparation for some two years before that. So it has been some time since we started that work, and it's probably time anyway to start a new, looking at a new strategy, taking into account the developments in the meantime of national policy, of the impacts that Covid have had on our, on public behaviour. So yes, that, that review of those, that vision of, and objectives basically comes to that conclusion. The appendix B is progress through the action plan for the Joint Municipal Waste Management Strategy. And my thanks to Rachel Stamp for having reviewed that through, and it now tells us what we've now been working on the last year in a lot more detail. And then appendix C of that, which I'm just going to move on to, is about measuring performance. It gives some detail of our performance over the last year, particularly with regards to the key performance indicators that the partnership have agreed previously. We've agreed four themes that we need to try to measure. The first one is the waste hierarchy, how we're doing against the waste hierarchy. And the two measures for that are the recycling rate of waste from households and the kilograms per household of household waste collected. And looking at those, Rachel, do you have the charts? Let's hope, fingers crossed, there we go, this one works. This is the main chart and this is probably sufficient for me to to show you at this stage because it tells an overview of where our performance has gone in recent years. You can see that in twenty nineteen, twenty, our recycling rate went up. We had started to move in the right direction after several years of heading downwards. But then we went into the Covid pandemic and public behaviour in terms of what they throw away, what type in particular of things they throw away and which collections they put in has changed. We have seen more waste, either non recyclable items or items put into general waste than into our recycling, particularly at household waste sites. We've seen less recycling, less material through at household waste sites, despite the relaxation of rules that were put in place for during the Covid period. That still hasn't picked back up. In light of that, our recycling rate has fallen from having gone up to forty five point four percent. We're back now around forty two percent for the last two years. That's the bad news, especially compared to the target that we had set ourselves to continue our upward progression that we had started. And that's the green line is the targets. The good news through the Covid pandemic in terms of waste is that we've been receiving less waste overall. As a partnership, we've been below the thousand kilograms per household that we'd set ourselves as a target. That's the purple line is the thousand. The pink line is what we've actually seen. It was much lower in the first year of the pandemic. But even as things have picked up again, we're still not back to the same kilograms per household as we were seeing pre pandemic. Moving on from that, well, I'm sorry, just coming back back to that one, sorry, Rachel. And that leads into the proposal that I'm putting forwards in the paper, that we look at our targets because clearly it would seem slightly irrational to target continuing to move up to fifty percent and below beyond, when although that may be our aspiration, we're setting ourselves up for failure, starting from a rate of around forty two percent. I've put some provisional targets in there as a proposal, but these are really an item for for discussion as to whether members feel that starting from where we're at and having a steady projection is reasonable or whether we should look to have a more significant bounce back or look at it in different terms. I'm happy to discuss that. Would you rather discuss that at the end of the presentation, Chairman, or do you want to talk about that now? Should we do that at the end? Yep. So there's some more detail in the other charts. I won't go into the detail of what they show, but just to say, this one indicate, this one is about curbside recycling collections, how much we collect and how much it contributes to the overall recycling rate. That has gone down a little in terms of what's in recycling collections from last year. But the good news is the the red bar is the main bit that's shrunk. We're receiving less non recyclable material in those recycling collections at curbside. The target recyclables and other recyclables that we're getting in the mixed collections, when added to the separate paper and card, which is the purple bar at the bottom, is pretty consistent with what it was last year and is better than it was pre Covid. So that is going well. The next chart, Rachel, this is composting. Pretty consistent with last year in terms of how much it's contributed to our overall recycling rate, although there does seem to be a general downwards trend overall, but only slightly. And the next one. This is the kilograms per household broken down into what happens to the individual materials. And you can see here, looking at the the red bar and the yellow bar at the bottom, those are landfill and energy from waste respectively. And that amount of non recyclable or non recycled waste is what's gone up. And the quantity that we're recycling or composting at the top has gone down and hence the recycling rate is lower than it was. We are receiving about the same quantity of waste as we were pre Covid, but less of what we're receiving is recyclable. And the next one, please, Rachel. And this is the really good news at the moment, that looking at contamination, which was the second of our themes, our four themes of what we wanted to look to measure, we have made a significant dent in it this year, both in terms of percentage, that's the blue line, which is the numbers on the right. So we're now down below twenty eight percent. And in terms of kilograms per household of that non recyclable waste. This is non recyclable waste in total in curbside collections. Sorry, in curbside recycling collections. So it's adding together mixed recyclables and paper and card where there's twin stream collections. And we have through the right thing, right bin campaign, through checking and rejecting bins where appropriate, we have brought the contamination level down significantly, which is good. And I hope we will continue to move in that direction, in that correct direction. I think that's the last page of that one, isn't it, Rachel? Yes, thank you. So just to very quickly move on to the other two themes that we identified from our strategic objectives. One was carbon. We did an initial assessment a few years ago, colleagues did. And we're now at a point where it's time to do another assessment. I'm told that new data is available in new ways, which gives a better methodology, which will give us a more accurate result. Work is underway with that. That will be available soon, I hope. So basically, keep an eye on that. The other theme we identified was customer friendliness. On the plus side, we do certainly continue to make customer engagement a focus of services. This included working with our recycling panel of residents, asking views through the county views survey and really seeking to understand how we can work best with our residents to achieve the best services and the best customer satisfaction. In terms of actually measuring that, that is easier said than done, particularly with services in flux, with twin stream rollout and with upcoming changes to national policy and with coming out, hopefully coming out the back end of the Covid pandemic. It doesn't seem an appropriate time to try to benchmark satisfaction levels because there are so many factors that would influence it. But clearly, that's that's up to the partnership. If if there's a strong feeling that we want to try to measure customer satisfaction, then we can. But we're certainly looking to improve it. So where we're at in terms of the, I'm afraid, I haven't actually put the proposed targets in these options and recommendations at the bottom. I focused on the annual review, but I'll I'll come back to that in just a second. But in terms of the annual review, the options are that the LWP, this is the public facing element, either approve publication of it exactly as it stands, although having, as I've already said, with a review of the format, just try to improve it and smarten it up. Or approve publication subject to specific changes. If anyone has any specific changes, then they could be agreed at this meeting and that would make life easier for making those changes. Or the LWP could decide to delay publication pending further input and changes if it's felt that there are significant changes needed. The appendices won't be published, sorry, I'm just gonna have a quick drink. The appendices won't be published to the same extent, although they will be publicly available to those who need to see them. But feedback is still welcomed on them, but they are largely intended to be information shared with the partnership rather than a published document. And so the recommendation is that the LWP approve the public facing review document for publication and note the information given in the appendices and in this report. So that would be the first item, Chairman, would be are members happy to approve as it stands or do they have any feedback? The other item that needs discussing is are the partnership happy to agree those proposed targets for recycling rate or would they like to see something different?
Thank you, Matthew. Councillor Evans?
Thank you very much and thank you very much for an excellent report and presentation as well. This is a very, very important topic because we're here as a Lincolnshire Waste Partnership, but the partnership begins with working with householders who, I think particularly in such a rural area as as much of Lincolnshire, really understand more than ever the importance of the protection of the environment, including resources of all types and therefore want to work with us. And I think there are two things to consider that set the the current report apart from the reports that we've had in the past in more normal times. And the first one is the coronavirus pandemic, which came upon us so unexpectedly. But I think it's fair to say impacted on the work of the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership for a far longer period of time than anyone could ever have imagined. And I think that there will still be impacts that will continue to emerge. So we're looking at exceptional circumstances from that point of view. The other thing is the the very clear indications of the the benefits that are already being derived from the rollout of the purple lided bin scheme. And that was first of all in Boston Borough Council and North Castlevan District Council. West Lindsay went this spring and East Lindsay in the autumn. Obviously, in West Lindsay's case, it was the first fundamental change to the refuse and recycling service that we'd made for around fourteen years. So as you would expect, there were one or two issues raised by that which were very effectively dealt with, which highlights the the massive contribution of Rachel Stamp and her team, if that could be mentioned, please, I'd appreciate it. But also communications in general. And that brings me to the point that I wanted to raise around the importance of communications and specifically when we're considering targets. My view, if anything, the the figures, because they're historic, understate the improvement in the mixed dry recyclables, reduction in contamination and of course, the separate collection of the paper and cardboard. But just as a suggestion, I think what would be really useful would be if rather than considering a realistic target ourselves, if we could somehow benchmark against similar other rural authorities and use their recycling rates as, so that we can judge whether we are improving, what areas we've got for further improvement, for all ways to keep residents as fully informed as possible of the successes and the part that they play in that success. So I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Got councillor Evans? You're muted.
Bit of a slow signal round here, I'm afraid. Yes, thank you a lot and thank you for the way you presented it. At the moment, I think on the doorstep, recycling's moving along in leaps and bounds, which is absolutely excellent. But the key thing for me, where I think that I wouldn't be ready to approve this at the moment is where we need to look into it a bit more, is the public seem to be coming along and we seem to be getting over hiccups and things like that, which is great news. But we need to, our household recycling centres are not separating plastics. They're not providing recycling sheds to let people take things away and recycle them instead of us just having to get rid of them where they could be upcycled and recycled. And we're expecting the public to recycle. So I think we need to be looking at this area immediately. We're mixing soil with rubbish and soil with rubble and things like this. So we've brought the public along and I think this is the area where I'm getting the frustration from the public, whereas they're taking things to the household recycling and they're sent away with them. And we we're having big issues with this in Boston. So I think we need to look at this area and I think then we will see lots of improvement because people will be more happy if we're doing the same thing. So for me, we've got a big hiccup with the household recycling centres at the moment. If we can get them as good as the doorstep recycling, I think we're we're on to a winner really. Thank you.
Thank you, just just in response. We have had quite a bit of disruption at the recycling centres in the last few months. It's it's something that we we think we're overcoming at the moment. We've we've gone out and sourced extra haulage capacity and we've we've also got extra off takers for the different materials. So it is something which it is a challenge and we do try and inform the public where we do get disruption. I think it it comes back to one of the previous points that when we were talking about food waste and garden waste, we are very much reliant on the commercial sector to be able to provide the facilities and disposal locations where material can go. So it may be ideal to some in some extent to just to keep materials together, so soil and hardcore, rubble, et cetera. If it's not feasible for a disposal outlet to have it separated and presented to them separately, if they're going to treat it all as one material, it's pointless collecting it as two different materials. So as as ideal as we would like things to be, it's not always possible. And we do have over twenty five, twenty seven or something like that, different materials which can be separately collected. We do have a finite amount of space. So I accept what councillor Evans has said in in terms of the disruption and the challenges. But ultimately, we have to work closer and we have to work better with the commercial sector. And if they're not able to do that, then we are pretty much at the behest of that that private market that we find very difficult difficult to control. But it is it's it's not it's not LCC sticking its head in the sand and saying we we can't overcome this because I think there's always opportunities for helping new private sector businesses to kind of develop the market. But let's let's be honest, it's going to be very difficult, but we need to do something and we are doing something by working closer with the private sector. So I think that's, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Councillor Head next, but but have we done any composition yet of the the material and the refuse bins? And whether there's actually, we can gain anything from the recycling out of them?
Yes. I've not gone through in detail the statistics, but I know Rachel Stamp had some sampling data of residual waste. If Rachel's on the line and If Rachel's on the line and wanted to come in or...
Thanks, Matthew. Yes, we've received a sample of the composition analysis for the residual waste at the moment. Looking at that, we're trying to put that into a little bit more detail and to put it in some context alongside the splits between those authorities that have gone through the twin stream and those that haven't. So certainly we can do some more work on that, Chairman, and bring that back to the Vets' Meeting. I think what we need to do is look at it not just in isolation of that residual composition, we need to look at it alongside all of the other waste streams as well and have a true picture of the whole waste in Lincolnshire, not just isolated. But we can do some more work as Anna and myself are looking at and bring that back to the next meeting of this or through the Strategic Officer Group.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. Councilor Head?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'll get the easy bit out of the way first. I've just got a couple of points on the annual report. Nothing serious, you'll be pleased to know. On page nine, the statement there, the clean paper and card is particularly important. I would put that in banner headlines because that's been a real success of the twin stream rollout. We're getting really good quality recycle and with paper, it can go round and round the system. That's a real success story and I think we should, we should highlight that so that people know that it has been very successful. And in relation to the infographics on the back, I think I'm right in saying that the comparative figures, whether they're up or down, whatever, is that they're made against, is it 2019 figures? Could a little footnote be put at the bottom of that so that people, when they look at those infographics, they will know what the benchmark, what we are benchmarking those figures against? Just a small point so that when people look at that, oh, well, it's up on 2019 or whatever it is, it doesn't say that. Apart from that, very happy with the report. Coming back to the recycling, as Councillor Riley has said, the twin stream rollout has changed people's attitudes in those areas where it's been done, Boston, North Casteven, West Lindsay. Yes, we've had a few kickbacks from people, but by and large, people have embraced that and they can see the benefits of that. What I would say in terms of targets, because we're in this sort of halfway stage, I would very much like to see the 50% target stay exactly where it is. What's the point of having a target that you know they're going to achieve rather than having a target that you're going to aspire to? If you miss it by a couple of percent or whatever, does that really matter? You need to have something to aim at here. And I think that when all is said and done, we get to the end of the twin stream rollout, I think you'll see that those recycling figures will go up quite dramatically because I don't think, and I may be wrong here in my assessment, I don't think the full effects of the twin stream rollout and the cleaning up of the MDR in Boston, North Casteven and West Lindsay, I don't think that's necessarily been felt entirely in the way that the figures have come because it's very difficult to assess at this point in time, I would think, where you've got part on one system and part on another system. And in terms of non-recyclables, we've run a very successful campaign so far on Right Thing, Right Bin. So people are taking those things out of the recycling bin and going into the black bin, which is the residual waste. So I would have expected to see that, that sort of level go up. And my guess is at the moment, we haven't done a full detailed analysis of everything that's going into the residual bin at the moment because I'm pretty certain there might be some people that can't be bothered to decide on whether it's clean plastic with new food waste or paper with new food and they just dump it in the residual bin anyway. But that again comes down to the education process that goes into it. And as already been said, Rachel and her team have done a sterling job through the rollout of the twin stream in educating people. And I think that the majority of people in those areas where it's been rolled out now do get it about recycling and what is good for recycling and what isn't to be recycling. So I think, I think that is a success story and that will be shown out in the figures that we get probably in 18 months' time, recycling. So I'd be quite happy to leave the recycling target exactly where it is for those reasons because I don't think that we should take the current situation as underperforming. I think this is work in progress and I would like to propose that it stays as it is. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. I think probably once Rachel gets the composition of the residual, you know, we can then identify what's in there and start, start doing comments and engaging on checking that out. Councilor Bushell?
Well, thank you, Chair. Just wanted to make a few comments on the report. Thank you. Concerned in respect of the reduction of house, the household waste recycling centres, I'd like to know a bit more detail about that and whether there's local data available on some of these figures so that we could determine areas, et cetera, to target locally and what that reduction at the Household Waste Recycling Centre, the impact that has on flytipping. Certainly, the flytipping that I see, the area that I deal with and across the city of Lincoln, a lot of it is domestic. Some of it, yes, is business waste, but a lot of it is domestic. So why are people not using sites that are available to them? I think we need a clearer understanding of that, whether they feel that they're not accessible and whether we need to look at that. It also concerns me that what seems to be a change of behaviour and that people now disposing of some recyclable materials and residual waste because clearly, they know the recycling bin is there for a purpose, is the other bins full up and are they having to dispose of excess into the residual bin? I know I certainly have to tread my recyclable waste down to fit more in and maybe that's an indicator, maybe that's something we need to take account of. A bit concerned about landfill as well. I know we have a target of reducing landfill from 4% to 2%, but I'd ask the question is, where is that current landfill waste coming from? I certainly have seen with my own eyes at the Great Northern Terrace, Household Waste Recycling Centre, waste going into a particular skip, number six, I don't get it, carpets, mattresses, glass, UPVZ frames, all, a lot of which I believe is recyclable if we were upping our game and looking at tackling recycling more efficiently. So I think there's areas like that that need looking into. I applaud the Right Thing, Right Bin campaign. And as I say, if we had localised data available to us, maybe we could target some localised campaigns. I think anecdotally, people are aware of some of the areas where most troublesome and I think that's something that we may need to take on board. I actually personally think, you know, satisfaction survey would be beneficial at this stage. If we don't ask customers what their issues are or what their concerns are, how do we know? We're guessing otherwise. And I think it would be good PR to at least do some sample surveys to see if there are any issues that are contributing to some of the reductions we've seen. And equally, I would want to see the target kept at 50%. It's aspirational, but it's a target that I think we should be aiming for. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do you want to pick up on a couple of points? Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I didn't note those down, so feel free, Matthew, just to help out. In terms of flytipping, there isn't a proven correlation between Household Waste Recycling Centre accessibility and flytip. This is, there has been national studies which show that whatever the different practices are for each service, there is a, there has been an increase in flytipping nationally irrespective of hours, booking systems, number of days opening the week. I think it takes a very dim view of residents to say that because they can't get into a Household Waste Recycling Centre, they resort to flytipping. We hear this a lot, but no one actually identifies people who've admitted to this. So I just see it as a, yeah, a weak argument. I think there is a, an increase in the number of illegitimate businesses who pick up material on the likes of Facebook. They will pay, they will be paid £20, £30 for material and then they will collect it, disappear down some country lane and dispose of material on a kind of industrial scale. I think that has increased considerably in the county and that material, which did increase significantly during Covid, I think that material does go to landfill. So there has been an increase which can be attributable to some of that in the landfill. And just wider looking at the, just addressing the comment about landfill rates, if we have disruption in the supply chain for where we take material, we have to still dispose of material. So if there's an emergency somewhere in the, in the supply chain, if a haulier breaks down or if an off-taker can't take material, unfortunately, sometimes we have to, we have to resort to landfilling because materials still keep stacking up. So it's something that we, we're addressing at the moment with having more different providers, as I stated earlier, that will take material in an emergency, but we always have to have that bit of contingency if, for example, we have a breakdown at the Energy from Waste Plant because material just doesn't stop materialising, unfortunately. In terms of the comment regarding the residual bins on reference to container, compactur six at Great Northern Terrace, none of the material would go to landfill. That material would go for incineration in North Highcombe unless, as I've just stated, there is some kind of emergency and we have to empty the containers. And this comes back to the point that Councillor Evans mentioned earlier about the disruption. We have to strike that balance between switching material off or sending it to landfill in cases of disruption. It's not something that we as LCC staff are failing at, it's a lot of external factors that we have to reorganise and just be mindful that we either have to turn material away from recycling centres or we have to resort to landfilling and other measures such as that. But it's a balance, it's not always perfect, but I think people need to be kind of conscious that disruption does happen, that we can't always control. I can't recall the other points raised, but if you've got anything, Matthew?
I'm just looking at those notes. I mean, I think in terms of flytipping, one of the issues that we've identified through the Environmental Crime Partnership is that there isn't brilliant data around flytipping. And in terms of what the county council have for data, flytipping quantity is so small compared to the other waste streams, the legitimate waste streams, that any changes in quantity of flytipping are quite small compared to, compared to everything else that's happening. I would say, looking at, looking at the back page of the annual review document, the throughput at household waste sites is down 27,000 tonnes in the last year compared to two years prior to that, because that's going back to the last year that was pre-Covid. That's an awful lot of waste that is not all appearing suddenly as flytipping. Most of it is changed behaviour, most of it has gone into curbside and we don't understand why public behaviour has changed to that extent when the sites are largely the same as they were before. But that is something we need to be looking at and trying to work out what we can do. And I would also agree that as well as looking at what is in the residual waste in curbside bins, we need to look at what's in the residual waste at household waste sites. And whilst we have, we certainly have limited capacity for a limited number of containers at household waste sites, if it turns out that we're receiving a larger quantity of something else that we could recycle, it might be worth looking at whether we could swap recycling, one thing for recycling of something else that might, we might be able to recycle more of. But yes, it's work that we'll be doing going forwards. And yes, that's about where I'm at on that.
Could I just ask about the availability of localised data, please?
Data in terms of the individual household waste sites?
Yes, or contamination, et cetera.
I can look at the information, yeah, we can share what the breakdown is of material at the, so this is in terms of the household waste sites?
No, domestic waste.
Oh, right, the curbside, yes, yes, we're...
The curbside, yeah.
We're looking at that. Rachel and her team are doing a lot more and have a sampling regime in place for regular sampling of the curbside material. So yes, we'll be, we'll be sharing that going forwards.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Evans?
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me speak. Right, just three points really. One is if we don't understand we need to survey the public or I invite you to come with me, come to the Household Recycling Centre, come on a walkabout and I can show you quite a few answers to some of the issues because the issues are really on the ground and loads of people have got great ideas and loads of people are aware of why these issues are happening. So I think we need to involve the public more for sure. Going towards the, about the recycling centre, we have to agree to disagree, Mike, please, because of the fact that Frampton Parish Council are having a meeting with Councillor McNally because they absolutely believe that all the flytipping around that area is happening because of the tip either being closed or turning away people who take household waste, wood, rubble. And some people are going back the second week and getting turned away again, the third week, getting turned away again. So I'm speaking with the Wombles, who are 150 strong in just a Boston area. They have told me that they are clearing tipped waste, household waste, not commercial waste, that is tipped after people have either been turned away or the tip is closed or the household waste recycling centre is closed. And I'm speaking to employees at, this is where you get all your information from, speaking with them at the Household Recycling Centre, they have told me they see that it gets tipped and it gets tipped several times. It gets tipped either because they're turned away and the car's full of garden waste or it gets tipped because the queues are so long and people can't wait anymore, so they turn around in the first available area. And unfortunately, people feel like they're protesting, especially if they've been a couple of times. They don't feel like they're breaking the law. They think they've done everything to get their things. So there is an element of a new form of protest. The other thing is, we had a massive issue with not having enough mattresses being able to take. And the fly swap team in Boston, who are absolutely amazing, are out every day from seven o'clock. So that fly tipping is out there, I can promise you. And they weren't able to take mattresses, they were being turned away. So even the fly swap team couldn't take stuff to the recycling. So we've been working on all these areas and we are making progress, but I think we really need to get together across all Lincolnshire because some areas, I'm sure, are working really well and look at the new way of how people are getting rid of their household recycling. And it's definitely more household recycling that you see in the areas and also the fact that people have said to me, they turn up when they're closed on a Wednesday and Thursday, but there's no sign up saying your nearest tip spaulding is open because everybody shuts at the same time. And literally, the mattresses took the house, the garden waste bin and then they turned all the garden waste away. So there is not enough bin. I've got about loads of points, but you, we need to get more people to actually go to the Household Recycling Centre and you can see the promise that you could do. We can look at places like Wigan that have none of these issues. We can look at, it's interesting, it's fascinating and I think we're at the start of really sort of improving everything. But this is my biggest complaint out of everything I do is the flytipping and particularly the fact that they can't get rid of the household waste. So I think, yeah, so I'm sort of fighting to try and make it easier for residents. So I apologise that I've got on my soapbox, but I think if we don't say it here, we'll all, lots of fantastic stuff, but if we don't say it here, we... Lots of fantastic stuff, but if we don't say it here, we won't get it sorted. So thank you, I won't say any more, thank you.
Did you want to come on? I mean, I know there's, I think there's only two, two times that the skips were unable to be emptied at the last month or so.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. There hasn't been any disruption at Boston since the 25th of June. So it will be interesting to compare the district council, the boroughs councils' data on what they're collecting, where, where this material is, where it's accumulating, how much material, what material the, the Wombles are collecting. Because we do need this to be data-driven. And we, we, I know there is an argument that we've got to react and help the public, but we, we need to do it with evidence and we, we can't just have this continual argument that people are doing it because the services are not accessible. They are accessible, they're accessible five days a week. It's very well publicised. And anyone who resorts to dumping material outside of a closed household waste recycling centre is breaking the law and they should be reported. And similarly, if people provide, give material to these unscrupulous businesses that then go and fly tip it, those residents are breaking the law as well. They can be prosecuted and receive fines. So I think it's, it's incumbent on all of us to take responsibility for this. You don't go to a shop that's closed and just help yourself, just smash the window and help yourself to the goods. You go away, you organise yourself to kind of, to, to be there at an appropriate time. I think it's, it's not a fair argument to say that these facilities are not accessible because they are. And we don't have the same levels of, of footfall that we had pre-Covid. So I, I don't buy a lot of the arguments, but yeah. I think if we could provide, if the Borough Council could give us some data on how much material they've collected in the last two weeks, it would be very interesting, interesting to see, make a comparison with the disruption that we've had. And just to point out, there are a couple of sites that have had no disruption in the last six months. They still get fly tipping. And it's, it's comparing arguments that are, it's really difficult to, to see where we can go with this. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So councillor Wright and councillor Whittington?
Thank you, Chairman. If I'm just start with the, the household waste recycling centres themselves. If we're talking about the composition of what's in the containers, can, can I just ask that we do check what days, because of the haulage issue, because since we, since we got rid of the very good booking system and now we're having to try and second guess what needs to be taken away, then there are instances where containers have been shut off and people have been told to put them in general waste or whatever. So I've actually physically been at a site more than one occasion where there is a little bit of disgruntlement because people have got recyclable material and been told to put it in the general waste container. Just because the simple fact is the other container is full and now, now it's a free-for-all again. It's impossible to try to work out the, the frequency of which containers need to be emptied. So that, it does happen. And I think we ought to just make sure that that's noted every time it happens so that we know what effect that's having on the composition. So that, that's, that's not a criticism, that's just how do we do this? I'm afraid, I don't want to be critical of councillor Evans' position, but... Your analogy then, Mike, of smashing a window to get into a shop because it's closed is... I, I cannot understand how we can even contemplate tolerating a situation where we've got people that allegedly don't think they're breaking the law because they've tried their best to put something in recycling centre, it was shut, so I dumped it in the British countryside or on the streets where my, my residents live. Or I think that's absolutely disgraceful attitude of the public and is not something that we should even tolerate and even think that it's acceptable. And I'm very worried that if the Wombles are saying that they know it's household waste, well, what that means is the evidence is not being sifted through. We're not getting to the position, which is what we should be doing, which is what we've been doing in Northcote Stephen lately very well, is prosecute people. It, it is, to me, it's absolutely despicable that you think, oh, the centre was shut, so I just thought I'd throw my rubbish anywhere. I mean, in what kind of civilised country do we live where people think it's the right thing to do? To just throw waste into, and especially in this rural county, into hedgerows and everywhere else. And then, of course, they then moan that when council tax goes up, because obviously it's just a, it's a perfectly free waste disposal system, isn't it? They have to drive around picking it up because they decided to dump it. So rather than going out on the ground and meeting people who think that actually it's not quite illegal because they tried, what we should be doing is, where every time we can, prosecute them. Because any other law you break, you suffer the consequences. So why would it be different for waste? It's, it's breaking the law, like you just said, Mike. I, I just find it absolutely appalling that people do that. And I don't hold that it's because the tips are closed or whatever. So the other thing as well is, is if people are producing household waste in such large quantities, rather than saying, oh, how do we help them get rid of it? Let's start by looking, how is it they're generating it in the first place? Because I don't think that households can produce as much of just general waste as is being said. Because, you know, all the evidence is showing that we're, packaging is being reduced, that people are thinking more now about what they buy and what they do. So why is it in some areas they seem to be producing more waste than they can put in the bin? And that's where, you know, that would be useful for information on the ground in each district area. If, if a district says it's got a particular problem, then that, that, that collection authority should be looking and speaking to its residents about how it helps them to reduce it in the first place, not how do we allow for them to create an ever-expanding problem and saying, don't worry, we'll sort it out for you? Because some people seem to think, I think they think they should have a household waste disposal centre in, in every, in every village. I mean, and that's ridiculous. So the public needs to be taking this on board, they need to be playing their part. It's not for councils to put nappies on people and wean them on milk for the rest of their life. You know, people have got to make, make, you know, a choice to actually be part of their community. And by, and by doing that, it's being a respectful member of the community. How, how can you, I mean, there's, we've just had a prosecution, we published it and we proved that there's a person in a village that was complaining, he was, he was dumping it in his own village. And naming and shaming, to me, was the best thing we can do. Because if people think that's acceptable, then I'm, well, I just, I just find it difficult that we're still talking about this year after year about the acceptability of dumping rubbish and it needs to stop.
Thank you, councillor Whittington?
Yeah, thanks very much indeed. I completely agree with what councillor Wright just said. Southcote Stephen, recently, we have had, I think, three successful prosecutions for fly tipping. One of them was a guy who fly tipped in both SK and NK. Yeah, he had, he, one of his, one of his, one of, one of his sites was in NK. Yes, and I mean, and our policy in, in SK is, we will go through and if we can identify the culprit or the household, we will prosecute. What was disappointing for the, and, and, and again, we will name and shame and we will issue press releases and make sure it's out in the public domain as to who, as to who the, as to who these people are. One of the, um, so things, and I wasn't, I mean, it's not really out of, out of, out of our control. Unfortunately, the courts don't seem to take it quite seriously, I think, as local authorities because some of the, the penalties that got issued were, were fairly small fines and community service, which probably doesn't go anywhere close towards, you know, being a proper sort of payback for the crime. I mean, in, in SK, we have a, a team that are out there every day, five days a week, every working day, going around responding to incidents of fly tipping. And we're starting to build up data of where the hotspots are now anyway. But we find as soon as we start sort of concentrating on those, they move elsewhere. So, so it's a little bit sometimes of chasing your tail around the district to, 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 to try and identify them. But certainly our recent prosecutions were, were instances where people had advertised their services on Facebook and had then just gone, picked up. And I think we need to get the message out to members of the public that, that if somebody, you do employ somebody to take waste from your house, they have to have a licence, asked to see their licence because that is a surefire way that they are then a legal and, and, and a legitimate company that's disposing of this stuff. Also, one, another problem we, we have in, in certain parts of Southcote Stephen, it tends to be where we've got lots of terrace streets, where we have houses in multiple occupancy and flats. And in those mixed residential, householders are on, you know, if, if they're in sole occupation of the, of the whole house, obviously, they have, they will have bins. But if they're in flats or HMOs, they're on bags. We have instances, large number of instances where members of the public, the collection day may be on a Friday, but on a Saturday and a Sunday, they just, the bags just go straight out and the bags are just lying around the streets again. And people, so we are looking and, and, and we have been working with residents to try and persuade them that this is, this is not the way forward. And, and we are considering, you know, the, the option now. And I believe legally, we're entitled to issue fixed penalty notices. So we are seriously looking at that for where people have, you know, just decided that, I'm not going to wait until the correct day to put the bags out, I'm just going to put them out any day. I mean, there are parts of Grantham especially where we, in effect, are sending operatives out every day virtually to try and contain this because if we were to leave it for a full week, we would have intolerable situations in certain parts of Grantham. So, so, so it is a real issue. And you try to educate the public and we've done so much education. You know, we've had officers even going down there door to door. We've tried to engage, we tried to put in CCTV cameras, they got vandalised. And you just end up by, by just thinking, and I agree entirely with what councillor Wright is saying. You know, I don't know how anybody can think that this is, this sort of behaviour is acceptable because quite simply it isn't. You know, but, but, but I'm guessing it's, it's issues that all of us, all of us are facing.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. David, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, councillor Whittington, you, you've mentioned a lot of things I was about to talk about. And Mike, absolutely spot on, whatever we do ought to be data-driven. And I don't have the data in front of me, but for Northcote Stephen, the delegated authority for prosecutions comes down to me for authority to, to, to take formal action. And by far, the vast majority of cases that, that pass across my desk are either commercial type waste crimes where, you know, sort of a, a local business thinks that it's okay to, to dump their waste in the middle of nowhere, usually small businesses. We have big waste crime as well, but all those who, who are aware of the work of the Enviro Crimes Group knows that Environment Agency worked really well locally with us on that side of things. And the other one is, yeah, white van man and, and social media. And by far, the vast majority of actions that we end up taking on, on domestic waste, and there is a lot of domestic waste out there, tends to be the case where somebody has used poor judgement in giving their waste over to somebody who loads up their white van and then dumps it in the middle of nowhere. And it's all gone for, for the sake of 50 quid. And usually those people who are caught out are very remorseful and sort of understand that after we've taken the action on them, what's happened that way. And so therefore, I think there's a number of things that I would urge partners to, to do, to continue to do, as councillor Whittington said, to make sure that everybody checks that there's a waste transfer licence with whoever takes the waste from, from that particular person. So most traders should have a waste transfer licence, who, you know, sort of builders or, or tradesmen. Many of them do that, but it's easy to check, it's very easy to check. We've provided consultation responses, Matthew's provided consultation responses to the national consultation on HWRCs about the way that we could, as a partnership, work better with residents to try and improve the situation, which includes tackling sort of the messages on social media. But locally, we've been trying to engage with the local group administrators to try and encourage the message to get through to the people within the local groups to, to, to do those checks. So that's, that's a simple action that everybody can take away to, to try and lobby those local social media administrators to, to give out that information to people. And everybody is, is already, is aware of the great group, work of the Enviro Crimes Group. Please do continue to support that, promoting the scrap campaign and, and getting that message out. We, you know, in Lincolnshire, we're, we're one of the best in the country. The feedback is we're one of the best in country in working together. So we need to support that partnership working going forwards. And there's some really good examples out there. Councillor Whittington would know of the recent joint actions that we've taken in Northcote Stephen and Southcote Stephen on, on, on the border to, to, to take prosecution and, and actions that way. And so there's, there's some great opportunities to do that locally. So there's an awful lot that, you know, members of this group can take away from this meeting to, to, to help with those improvements.
Thank you, David. Anyone, anyone else? So before, so we'll go on to the recommendations, but I think, I think we've all pretty agreed that the target figure should remain at 50%? Yep. Approve the publication of the annual review, have all agreed?
Sorry, Chairman, can I just come in on that? So in terms of agreeing, just to clarify, that's subject to the format being reviewed and certainly further to things councillor Head has said about clarifying which year the infographics apply to and maybe trying to more emphasise some of the key points that are nice things that we can have as kind of headlines for the public?
Yeah, I think we're all, we're all agreed, aren't we? Yeah. So the next one is the food collection trial. Do you want to, are you checking this one, Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chairman, my apologies. Both of the officers, both the senior officers are actually on leave this week. So rather than just sort of defer this item until the next meeting, I thought I'd bring it. So if there are any really technical questions, I may not be the best person to answer them, I may have to defer to officers, but I can, and of course, I'm a fairly new portfolio anyway. But hopefully, everybody's read, 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 read the report. As people will know, started in sort of June 18, originally going up until June 2020. But SK, we decided to sort of carry it forward until the end of 2022. I, I, I think on the basis that we were kind of expecting that the national rollout would have happened before the end of the trials. But of course, because he didn't for a variety of reasons. And principally, the reason why we had to stop the trial wasn't so much the annual cost because that was a sort of about, it was only about £20,000, £30,000 a year. But the two vehicles that we purchased at the start of, of the trial, because it was a trial, we purchased a couple of second-hand vehicles to, to collect the food waste. And in the last financial year, unfortunately, they cost £70,000 to keep on the road. So they're at the end of their sort of useful life. So realistically, if we kept the trial going, we would have to purchase a couple of new vehicles. And we just, just didn't have the resources at the time. So that's the real reason, so that's the fundamental reason why we had to end it when we did. So we, we sort of did just over 4,500 properties across both rural and urban areas, excluded flats because obviously flats, flats for several reasons are quite difficult to actually access. Food, the food waste was collected on a weekly basis at the Gunaby Hill Waste Transfer Station. That was centred on a skip on a weekly basis up to the, to the Enro Digestress, Hamswell Cliff. In terms, in, in terms of the vehicles that were used, a Wombles were second-hand, we decided... In terms of the vehicles that were used, we were on second hand, we decided to go for the sort of the split pod side vehicle, because there was a lower staffing requirement there. So again, it kept, it kept costs down. Just going on to some of the kind of results that are quite interesting. And it's difficult for a number of reasons to sort of identify why the tonnage went down. If you sort of look at the two tables at the top of page 47, you can kind of see the breakdown there in our collection of residual waste, mixed drying, food waste, and you can see the food waste in terms of tonnes and totals during those periods coming down. And again, if you then look at the second table, you can see the weekly amounts being collected coming down as well. Ultimately, and I think we'll go on to some of the thoughts at the end, we're not entirely sure the reason for that. Officers think that potentially there were three reasons. One, that over time, people became a lot more aware of food waste and decided they, you know, they were doing things internally within their own households, that was reducing the amount of food waste, they may have been shopping differently. We also, we don't know if there was a boredom factor creeping in, that people start with this, with all the best intentions in the world, and then over time drop off and become a little less, you know, enamoured for right reasons. And also, the tail end of it was during Covid as well. And of course, Covid did a lot of strange things, so we don't know if there was a Covid aspect to all of that anyway. When I was at the LGA Conference a couple of weeks ago, I was speaking to somebody from Apsie, and they've done a far greater sort of food waste trial in Wales, and their general thoughts were largely the same, that over time, the tonnage rates and the collection rates dropped. They seem to think it was a combination of people's behaviour changing, but also a certain aspects of, oh, is this food waste, you know, and just becoming a little bored with it. So I think our sort of overall findings are in line with that. Obviously, when we were doing the food waste, our recycling rates in SK, which are currently about 42%, leapt to about 48. So, and have now obviously dropped back because we're no longer collecting it. One thing that we did sort of look into was the type of vehicles, because you collect, because one of the problems you find, we found, is that you collect food waste at a different rate to the other waste streams. So if you're collecting on the same day, because we did look, one option we did look at was a twin-potted freighter, where you put a side pod on an existing waste freighter to collect the food waste at the same time. But you would actually, you actually collect the food waste at a different rate to the waste that's going in the main freighter. And also, twin-pod freighters just don't work on narrow terrace streets with parked cars because they tend to have a, you know, they just don't, don't work. So in terms of costings, our finance team, it's difficult because we kind of worked out the costs we incurred, we've tried to work out if we were to roll it out across the whole of SK, and potentially there's going to be purchasing new vehicles, additional staff, and the costs vary because if you finance the purchase of the vehicles through different ways, the capital costs and the way you port them into the revenue can change. But we certainly think in SK that if we were to roll food waste out, the cost per year, and I'm looking at paragraph 2.6 on page 49, would be between £950,000 and £1.3 million per year, excluding haulage and treatment costs. And of course, as we go on to make the point, that was pre, these costings were done pre recent increase in fuel costs. So what the cost is going to be now, obviously, it's going to be considerably more than that. And we didn't include the external haulage cost in there, because at the moment, as I was saying, we were putting one skip a week on the back of a lorry up to Helmswell Cliff, and that was taken between five and six, between five and six, six tonnes a week. If we were to roll this out, we probably would be shipping, we potentially pushing potentially 30, 35 tonnes a week, so potentially a lot more haulage costs and treatment costs. And as I sort of, I think, as we mentioned before, with these separate waste streams, the more you use external vehicles, haulage vehicles, you've got an increase, you've got the cost of doing that, and you've also got the carbon footprint of doing that. So if you were to potentially roll this out across the whole county, it's potentially going to cost district councils a lot of money to actually do this. There's going to be an awful lot of pressure on the haulage industry potentially to provide all these extra vehicles to go and do all of this. And then it's all been referred to the capacity at Helmswell Cliff, there may be the requirement for additional anaerobic digesters as well. So I think there's an awful lot of issues in there. We've, which I think a number of those questions we've kind of posed in the sort of list of the sort of discussion points on pages 49 and 50. So I'll leave it to that. As I say, I'm sorry if it's a bit rough and ready, but if the officers had been here, I'm sure they would have given a fuller report, but any specific questions, I may have to take back to them. So thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. That's quite comprehensive, really. Has anyone got any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick one, really. You say you're taking like 1.5 kilos of waste per property. Do you think with people seeing that going into their bins, they're thinking cutting back on their food, and that could be one of the reasons why your food waste went down? Also, you said about the burden fund you had, was for the first two years, and then you had to pick up the bill, and then you're saying you can't really afford to do it. Was, I mean, I don't think we can do it without having this burden fund on a permanent basis anyway. And my final thing is, because the food waste is going to be going to these digesters to do not hydrogen, but methane, because it'll be cheaper, I think. Would you be looking at going that way for lorries, to buy lorries in that, to use methane, well, with diesel, you know, to help cut the costs of vehicles, basically?
I think, I think your first question, I think it is difficult because certainly the average collections per household dropped, and the overall tonnage has dropped. Now, again, whether it was people just being a bit more careful about how they were shopping, you know, and thinking, oh, you know, maybe if you've got all of your food waste for a week in your house, in one of the metal caddies we provided, it might sort of focus the mind. Actually, you know how much food we have actually wasted this week? So it might have focused people's minds in that. Of course, of course, with the tail end of it being into Covid, it's difficult to tell because people were at home more, they might have been going out less, they might have been buying less. It's really, really difficult to actually know, really. And that's, and that's the problem. Potentially, I think maybe one thing we should have done with hindsight is maybe have gone back to people and kind of tried to look at some of the reasons potentially why the amount being generated had dropped down. Unfortunately, it was just, it was, it was, it was a funding thing. I mean, it was only costing us about £30,000 a year when we took the funding over, but it was the cost of those vehicles, because literally by the end of this last financial year, they were, I mean, they cost £70,000 just to keep on the road last year. They're at the end of their life, and we'd had to have gone out and purchased a couple of either new vehicles or second-hand vehicles. And we're, like all district councils, having to make savings and whatever. In terms of funding going forward, it'll have to be funded via new burdens funding or something like that, because, you know, these costs in the paper, you know, they were done pre the recent increases in fuel and diesel, they could be considerably higher than that now. It's a cost that local authorities can't fund themselves, so it'd have to be funded by government, Jack. I mean, it's as simple as that. And your final question was on?
It was on the vehicles themselves. If you're buying vehicles in, would you go down the route of having them half diesel, half methane?
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things, I think, one of the things about our own vehicles, potentially, this is an issue that we're currently looking at, I think, probably all councils are, going forward, do we look at vehicles powered by biodiesel, do we look at electric vehicles? Certainly for some of our smaller vehicles in our fleet at SK, we think potentially the technology's there for electric. But I don't think anybody's actually managed to get a big waste freighter that's got a range that would be big enough to even do a rural area. I know some councils in London have got electric freighters, but they have a lot shorter runs than us, and they can kind of, you know, cope with it. I know Aberdeen City Council are experimenting with a hydrogen-powered freighter at the moment. Hydrogen might be the way forward for some of those larger vehicles, but at the moment, at the moment, I don't think, I don't think we know. So it's, in SK, we probably replace three or four freighters a year. At the moment, this year, we're replacing diesel with diesel. In two or three years' time, because of their eight-year life cycle, we may have to start looking at alternatives. At the moment, those alternatives, certainly for the bigger vehicles, aren't there at the moment. So will be, so will be a dilemma going forward for the local authorities.
Thank you, Chairman. Just add, I'll keep it brief, but just confirm, councillor Tyrrell, the county council did contribute to the initial trial, and that was to cover the, mainly the cost of the vehicles, but part of the operational cost for a fixed period. And that funding obviously was fixed and wasn't continued after that timescale. In terms of AD, I think ideally we would like an anaerobic digester, digesting plant in each district council that could direct deliver. However, I think that's probably not going to happen. There's only one or two plans, one or two that are in the pipeline at the moment, one actually in the county, there might be future ones a bit further down the line. But I think the model that we will have to follow will be similar with the incinerated waste, residual waste that we send to the energy from waste plant, and also recycled material, whereby we accept that material at the waste transfer stations, and then we are responsible for the onward haulage. So as soon as the districts drop it on the floor, it becomes the Waste Disposal Authority's responsibility to dispose of. So that kind of takes out part of the complexity that districts will have to worry about on that side, but the bigger issue is going to be evaluating what types of vehicles each district will be using. I don't see pod backs being as viable. I don't think that, you eloquently pointed out, once you get a difference in fill rate, essentially it's got to go back to the depot and empty just for half the vehicle. So I think it's got to be a dedicated fleet. Fueling is going to be critical, but I think one of the big challenges for the county is that we are not best placed for providing these kind of fueling stations, whether they're biofuel, hydrogen fuel, or even electricity fueling. It's something that our infrastructure is not that brilliant, but I think anything which has to happen for the district councils is going to need a lot of discussion, negotiation, agreement with commercial sector again, because the big players who are in food haulage and other types of haulage, goods haulage, they will be the big drivers that provide these fueling stations. So I think we need to, to some extent, just piggyback on what they're doing, because take each district in its own kind of scalability, that is not going to be enough. Each authority is not going to have enough vehicle, enough usage that would actually enable one of these fueling stations to get constructed and be efficient. So it's going to be a real challenge. I think it's going to be something which, as I've said, is going to take a lot of discussion with private sector, and this is where I think we need to, we need to be a bit more commercial, which is obviously one of the partnership objectives. But yeah, fueling is going to be a big issue. And then the other, just very briefly, the other thing is delivery timescales. So if everyone is going to the market to buy new fleets of trucks at the same time, the supply chain may not be there to provide something by 2025. And I think that's where, as districts, might want to consider having a bigger, more holistic approach to this and joining together to get away from boundaries, because that could create efficiencies in collections. And having a smaller service to serve a bigger area is more efficient. So I think it's just food for thought. Pardon the pun, I just keep using that one, sorry.
I think, I think I agree with that. It's interesting that those councils that have gone down, especially using electric freighters in London, they're where the services are contracted out to one of the big providers. So at the moment, it's the big companies that are kind of covering the capital cost of those vehicles. Obviously, they'll be passing it on in the service charges to the district councils. But of course, for SK, because we have our own fleet, the capital commitment would be massive, and I guess be massive for all, any district council that has got its own fleet. And the point is, we'll all be trying to buy these vehicles at exactly the same time. So the timescale for delivery is just going to be, well, you know, we're not all going to have them at the same time, as simple as that. And potentially as well, I've seen costs, I mean, in the moment, I think a conventional freighter comes in at about £200,000. A twin podder, which we've discounted anyways, is about £230. But the electrics are coming in at £450k, and the hydrogen's, well, goodness only knows. I mean, you know, where local authorities are going to find that sort of money from? Because I'm guessing that these vehicles will cost more anyway. There'll be, the supply chain that has been alluded to won't be able to bring that. And of course, with any demand and supply, if demand exceeds supply, the cost is going to go up anyway. So there's a huge, there's a huge cost there. And it comes back to the point I was making earlier, I don't even think governments have realised, actually, what the true impact of all of this actually is going to be in financial terms. So it might be why the consultation is late coming back, because maybe they are starting to think it's going to cost us an awful lot more money than we thought.
Councillor Wright and councillor Head.
Thank you. I'll be brief, because we've overrun and I've got to leave for another meeting. Mike said a lot while I was going to say about vehicles, so I won't re-say it, but we've got to do collective bargaining, we've got to, and not only that, just look at the routes as well. I know a couple of us now are talking about that, but because the thing is, is apart from the however long it takes to dispose of wherever it goes, and again, we can't just have the one AD plant, because that's a single point of failure as well. Anything happens there, and we're all, you know, you can only hold it in transfer stations for so long before it starts to smell. But we've got, so we've got to do that with the vehicles. The, I was going to say something else, then, I've forgotten now. The thing about London boroughs really annoys the hell out of me. I had one of them preaching to me, and I said, but my district is over 340 miles larger than your borough, so don't tell me about excellent service delivery, because if I only had to go around six square miles, guess what? You know, we have a wheelbarrow, never mind an electric truck. But that's, that's one, the other thing. But the last one is, I think you can be a little bit more positive about weights going down. I used to have a compost bin. I, I used to have a compost bin in my old, that could take some food. You, you put it in with a bit of mix and you put it in there. And even if you think you're careful or you think you know, it's only when you actually start doing things like putting your food waste in, you suddenly notice what it is you're throwing away. And you suddenly think, well, actually, I need to change how I buy that, because I'm throwing the same thing away all the time. And so even people think they're careful, and I'm a Yorkshireman, so I am careful, you know. Is, is, but the thing is, it's only when you do something like that, and I changed my habits. I know I did that over fresh produce because of what I was putting in that bin. So there is a bit of learned behaviour there that can make the difference. It's not just about people becoming disinterested. There's probably a bit of both, but we should be positive and say that there is that in there.
Thank you. Councillor Head?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'll, I'll be quite brief. I'm not sure what I'm going to ask for is entirely possible. The, the whole basis of the food waste collection, we're always looking at environmental impact. And my assessment is that this has come about because of government's perception that in the majority of areas, food waste goes to landfill, which obviously is a really, really bad practice. Here, it goes to energy from waste. It's got a fairly high calorific value and it generates electricity. And I just wonder how easy it would be to calculate the environmental impact of food waste going to the energy from waste plant and food waste collecting separately, when we've got all these vehicles trundling around the countryside, collecting up bits and pieces? Because at the end of the day, what we're talking about here with all of our waste collection and recycling is environmental impact. And we're duty-bound to reduce the environmental impact of what we do. And I don't think we or the government should lose sight of that fact and, and unilaterally impose on areas that have got a very good system in place. And I'm assuming that the environment, environmental impact of what we're doing at the moment is not too bad. But it would be interesting to see that piece of work, if it could be done relatively straightforward. And to come back to the partnership and give us a figure of that, please.
Can I, can I just jump in first? You've, you've hit the nail on the head, councillor Head. Sorry, that's just, that's terrible. I didn't mean that. I don't think anyone has done a, an evaluation to assess what the carbon footprint is of what the initial, what, what we have now, what's the status quo. If you're looking to reduce it, if you're not actually measuring what we've got in the first place, how can you tell that you've got any kind of reduction? So you, you could argue that a weekly collection of food waste for a big county like Lincolnshire is going to be massively damaging compared to a four-nighly collection where it's going through a tried and tested process. But I think it's something that we are talking to our energy from waste operator and also the potential AD providers about how we measure the carbon footprint of treating material. And then I think Matthew will know more than me, but if, if we then include the haulage model, I think it, it could open up quite a can of worms, and, and it, it might actually turn the whole environmental argument on its head. But I don't think anything has been, been done so far unless, unless Matthew can add anything. Okay.
I would say, Mike, that's, that's something we could try and fit in specifically to the carbon assessment work that our sustainability team are looking at and ask those particular questions. Because I was quite surprised with the previous assessment that was done that was, it has to be acknowledged, partly identified there were lots of gaps in what data is available. But it did identify that even with such a low percentage of landfill that we have, that the landfilling that we are doing potentially has a big impact on our carbon footprint. And it may well be that, as you say, if the government are looking and saying, okay, well, it's far better to send food waste to AD than to landfill it, absolutely. But it may not be so cut and dried in an area where you're doing energy from waste. So yes, we can, we can try to include that in those calculations. And include the haul, haulage of the additional vehicles collecting waste, which is already being collected through current systems.
Does anyone have any other comments? Did you, did you want to comment, councillor Brayley? No. So that's the end of that agenda item. So that takes on to item ten, which is the forward plan, which is just for noting. Has anyone got anything to, councillor Brayley?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just a suggestion for consideration for a future meeting. But it's very much based on the minutes from the previous meeting of the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership and a round conversation with North and North East Lincolnshire councils. But also some of the items that we've spoken about during the meeting this afternoon. For example, I know that North East Lincolnshire council are currently doing a food waste collection trial. I think that's a part. There are really good reasons possibly that we could, if we could invite representatives from those two councils, both members and officers potentially to come as observers to this meeting. But I, I just suspect that they will have a considerable wealth of data, just as we have, that they may be willing to share with us. So I just put that forward as a suggestion, but I can see a lot of merit in doing that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Do, do you speak with them at all, Mike?
We, Matthew set up a, a group several months ago just to talk to neighbouring authorities. And they have been really useful. It's been good intelligence that we've developed so far. And we will look to kind of continue that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, is there any chance of feedback from the officer working group about what was mentioned earlier about working together?
Yes, I mean, I would say specifically in terms of, as well, in terms of the, the waste strategy and what the proposed way forwards is for a new waste strategy. But yes, we, we, as was identified, we can have conversations about working together.
Yeah, so I'd just like to thank everyone for coming and hope you enjoy the ride home.